Council meeting to order. Stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, audacious under God, indivisible, and liberating, just as for all.
Pardon, take the roll.
O'Connor.
Here.
Morissette.
Here.
Alms.
Here.
McCormick.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Hoggitt.
Here.
Hall.
Here.
All right, the first thing that we're going to do is we have a recognition ceremony here for our retiring police chief, Marty Jensen. Marty, if you would please come up and I think the, uh, the, uh...
Service mayor and council, I'm Paul Adams and Greg Sarno. We represent the Police and Fire Commission for the city of Hudson. It is our honor to present to you a small commemoration for your 31 years of service to the city of Hudson spanning two centuries. That sounds like a long time, right? Spanning two centuries, not the full thing, but spanning two centuries. Like, I'm a relatively new resident here to Hudson. I moved into town in 2013. And I can say that having spoken to some of your officers, having gone on ride-alongs with two of your officers, and now serving on the commission, that the Hudson Police Department is a well-respected and honorable department. And it's because of your fidelity, integrity, and leadership that our department has become that way. We truly are a leader in the St. Croix Valley because of your dedication and service to the city and citizens of Hudson. The Hudson Police and Fire Commission extends its grateful appreciation to Marty Jensen for serving the Hudson Police Department and the city of Hudson as police chief from 2008 to 2018, and his prior service as a sergeant and patrol officer from 1987 to 2008. Your long career professional service to the city of Hudson residents is a testament to your commitment to the safety and well-being of our citizens and to everyone who visits our city. Bob Sebel, Chair, Paul Adams, Vice Chair, Greg Sarno, and Tricia Christensen. Chief, we thank you for your service and wish you all the best in your retirement.
I told I gotta wait.
You might as well, unless you want to do it twice, Marty.
No, I'll wait.
Marty, on behalf of the city and personally, I want to thank you for all the work that you've done. It's been great over the last few years to be able to get to know you. You've done a marvelous job. You've represented the city very well. You've represented your department very well. You've been a great face for the police, for all of us, as well as for the county. And I know that you've interacted with the county a lot. Personally, it's been great to get to know you. I consider you a friend, and I really appreciate that. I appreciate all you've done for our city. And we're here to recognize you as well. The city of Hudson extends its grateful appreciation to Marty Jensen for his 31 years of exemplary and loyal service to the Hudson Police Department and the city of Hudson, including serving the last 10 years as police chief. The city is thankful for the professionalism and integrity that Chief Jensen has provided to the citizens of Hudson and his dedicated leadership of the police department, March 1987 to April 2018, signed by me and representing the city and the city council. Marty, thank you so much for everything you've done.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody. I do appreciate this. My intent when I first got hired with the city of Hudson was to get a few years and then go back into Minnesota, because that's where I was born and raised. But I fell in love with this community and decided this is where I was going to put up my roots. And I wouldn't have been able to do it without all the support I've gotten from the city councils and the mayors and from the citizens and my police officers, but especially from my family. Because when you marry into a police family, you also marry the career. My wife, Ann, who's in the back, I would not have been able to do any of this without her, so if we can give her a round of applause, I would appreciate it. Again, thank you very much. Four more days and then I'm on vacation for a while, so, uh, again, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Marty, and it's a well-deserved vacation. Good to see you. Next, we have public hearing on ordinance 3-18, amending municipal code, Chapter 255, zoning sections 255-85A and section 255-89 to remove security deposit language. Is there anyone, somebody phoning it in? All right, anyone here have any comments in the public hearing? Any comments for the public hearing? Any comments for the public hearing?
I move to close.
Second.
Got a motion, second to close. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motions approved.
Move to suspend the rules.
Got a motion to suspend.
Second.
Got a motion, second. Roll call.
Morissette.
Yes.
Alms.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Hoggitt.
Yes.
Hall.
Motion's approved, the rules are suspended.
Move to adopt ordinance 3-18.
Second.
Got a motion and second to adopt. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motions approved. Next, we have comments and suggestions from citizens. Is there any, are there any comments? Citizen comments, anyone? Welcome.
Thank you. So, the four of us are members of the Hudson Police Explorer Post, and we're a group of teenagers, high school kids, who are interested in a potential career in law enforcement. About a month ago, we traveled to, we took about 14 explorers to the Wisconsin Dells for the state law enforcement exploring conference. There, we took third place in the arrests and search scenario and first place in the attorney general's legal exam. And this summer, we look forward to attending the National Law Enforcement Exploring Conference in Indiana.
Excellent. Congratulations. Perfect. You know, the rest of you, if you're up here, anybody else want anything, have anything to say? It's your opportunity. Well, thank you very much and congratulations. That's great.
We'd like to recognize Matt Parsons, who I believe is one of their leaders, correct? Yes, he's one of our new officers who actually came up through the Explorer program. So, he continues to work with them and even now, as he's an officer.
Thanks, Matt. All right, any other comments?
I'm Darla Myers, 1098 Golden Oaks Lane in Hudson. On February 9th, 2018, Joyce Hall sent an email to Devon Willey and Jen Zeiler stating, "As you know, the city has been offered a year's membership to the National League of Cities. Would you please ask all of the employees to visit their website and share their opinions with me regarding league membership and whether or not they think the city would benefit from it? Thanks for your help." It has been confirmed that not a single employee of the city of Hudson employees emailed a response to Hall. This should be very troubling for the city of Hudson taxpayers to know that virtually no staff employee responded to Joyce Hall's request for feedback. Yet, the majority of the Hudson Common Council voted to fund an overtly partisan organization with taxpayer money on behalf of a special interest group. Many of us sat through the budget whittling process of a few months ago, and with the trail of lawsuits that potentially could be involved with some of the National League of Cities priorities, the city of Hudson would probably be able to fund eliminating all of the counties' buckthorn with the cost of one lawsuit. As an example, it took a very short amount of time for the state of Florida to be sued by the NRA. Those who cherish Second Amendment rights will be watching the city of Hudson very closely. Having worked in manufacturing and nonprofit sectors, it was a requirement for those who actually worked with a project or product to submit a recommendation or non-recommendation to a process or product. If the staff did not make a recommendation, the management did not purchase nor join in on anything that was not recommended by those who had actually worked with the process or product. Why would Joyce Hall and the majority of the Common Council move ahead with spending $1,500 taxpayer money for the National League of Cities if a majority of the staff did not recommend a buy-in? Was this taxpayer-funded membership a foregone conclusion by the majority of the Common Council? Knowing she wasn't receiving email responses, wouldn't the logical conclusion be that the staff didn't feel the city would benefit from membership? Why isn't the local newspaper reporter asking this question? Did I miss something in scanning the 900-plus documents in the open records request? Please correct me if I did. In scanning the open records documents, one word kept coming to mind: redundancy. Over and over again, there was nothing that stood out as a, "We can't find this service anywhere else except with the National League of Cities." In fact, at least one conference was jointly offered by the National League of Cities and the Wisconsin League of Municipalities. There has been a request submitted for the Hudson Common Council to join the American City-County Exchange for only $50 a year. This organization places the taxpayer number one in the priority list. How refreshing is that? If the Hudson Common Council does not fund this organization, the obvious question will be, why wouldn't they? Or is there an underlying attempt to placate a certain special interest group? In the world of politics, one lesson is easy to learn: liberal special interest groups never settle for one little bone you may throw them. My opinion is that they will never give up until the city of Hudson is declared a sanctuary city, along with all the other poisonous tentacles that would go along with that designation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'm Linda Saefland, 1522 Hunter Hill, Hudson. I'm asking you to join the American City-County Exchange for only $50 per year. The ACCE mission is America's only nonpartisan forum for elected local officials who believe taxpayers should come first in every decision. In an effort to better serve constituents, ACCE members learn from experts and each other about issues, processes, and problem-solving strategies that matter to people in their communities. Provided with important policy education, local lawmakers become more informed and better equipped to serve the needs of their communities. ACCE is a division of the American Legislative Exchange Council. For just $50 for a one-year recurring membership, you can be part of America's only free-market, nonpartisan, voluntary membership organization. The mission of American City-County Exchange is to engage local elected officials and leaders from business and industry for the advancement of limited government and free-market principles. The American City-County Exchange brings together local elected officials in the private sector in a nonpartisan forum to develop model, policy, and other measures that promote low taxes, taxpayer transparency, minimal debt, and regulations. ACCE's vision is to become the go-to organization as a recognized defender of individual liberty and a voice of reason for common sense solutions. In order to represent all your constituents and all your taxpayers, please join the American City-County Exchange. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we take more comment, this is actually on the agenda, right?
Oh.
Yes.
You know what? I'm sorry. That's right. Thank you for bringing that up, John.
So, we'll take comment during the...
Right, yes, 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 yes. I apologize. I missed that. John's absolutely right. So, anything that is on the agenda, we do not traditionally, well, by rule, I guess we do not allow discussion on during citizen comments. We will allow discussion on that when it comes up on the agenda. So, thank you for pointing that out, John. Any other comments? Tony.
Yes, so you are opening up the conversation to the ACCE, then I won't talk about it here.
Right, it will be during the agenda.
That's fine, that's good. I want to congratulate and thank the city for joining the NLC. It is not partisan. It has got many conservative groups. It even has other groups that are out to save money and to help lower taxes. So, there's a lot of good things about that as well. So, I want to congratulate you for taking a stand, especially for even tonight's agenda, where you're trying to reach out to other organizations outside of Wisconsin and learn. I want to say to you, there's a counterbalance to the citizens for the St. Croix Valley that I feel create a threatening environment. When they say they're going to be watching you, then they say the tentacles of these evil things that are being coming up. Just know there's another group, the Hudson Inclusion Alliance, that's here to counterbalance the threats and the bullying that comes out this way. We're growing as a group so that we and Hudson are not going to continue to be picked on without a counterbalanced voice, so that people like Joyce, who are making good choices and listening to people, whether the technicality, if an email was returned, or you heard it in conversation, those things don't get drawn out, it comes out like a threat. You don't need to continue to worry about that. We're going to be here, and we're going to be plenty loud and make sure we respond to prejudice wherever we see it. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Any other comments? Any other comments? Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll close that portion of the agenda. Discussion possible action on consent agenda items.
To approve the regular meeting minutes of February 26, 2018, to approve claims in the amount of $981,789.76, contingent on payment of any outstanding debt owed to the city, and successful completion of the background check, to approve the issuance of three regular operator licenses for the period of March 13, 2018, to June 30, 2019, to Andrew Kendhammer, Jennifer Brenney, and Tracy Denbonsky, to approve the license application for a temporary Class B picnic license to serve beer and wine at the St. Patrick School Gala on April 14, 2018, to St. Patrick's congregation, to approve the application for a secondhand article dealer license for Susan Southheimer from Kudos at 805 Dominion Drive for a period of March 13, 2018, through 1231, 2018, contingent on the standard background check and payment of any outstanding debt owed to the city, to approve the new election inspectors for the 2018-2019 term as presented, to approve purchase of the Veritek Blend Boss system in the amount of $21,990, to approve the proposed changes to the employee handbook as presented, to approve the purchase of a 2019 single-axle dump truck from Ness Truck in the amount of $90,288, to approve the purchase of a stainless steel dump box and plow accessories from Universal Truck in the amount of $103,384, and to approve the partial release of water service termination agreement between the city of Hudson and Autozone and Huntset Center LLC.
Can you pull item H, please? Then I'll move for approval on the remaining items.
Second.
Got a motion, second, for approval of consent agenda, minus item H. Roll call.
Morissette.
Yes.
Alms.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Hoggitt.
Yes.
Hall. Yes.
Motion's approved. Item H.
Clarification on why are you moving the personnel decisions out of finance and into the full council?
It's been done that way for anybody that hasn't been a department head when we've hired staff positions. The Finance Committee hasn't been involved in the last, I mean, when we've hired staff members for the Public Works or for office staff here.
Are you talking non-managed people?
Yes, yes. So, the management staff that's listed there would still come through Finance, those are the specific listed.
Okay, thank you for clarification.
Yes, it's just, it's just anybody that's not considered a department head.
Okay, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion, second, for approval. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion's approved. Discussion possible action on ordinance 4-18, amending the comprehensive planned land use designations for 721 First Street and 811 First Street, Monarch Ventures LLC.
I'd like to move to suspend the rules for A and B.
Second.
Okay, got a motion, second, to suspend the rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
Morissette.
Yes.
Alms.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Hoggitt.
Yes.
Hall. Yes.
Motion's approved, rules are suspended.
Move to adopt ordinance 4-18.
Second.
Got a motion, second, to approve, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motions approved.
Move to adopt ordinance 5-18.
Second.
Got a motion, second, to approve, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motions approved. Discussion possible action on room tax community subsidies budget.
This was discussed at Finance, recommendation out of Finance was to approve as presented. And as I noted, if there's things that come up during the course of the year, we can amend this budget as we go through the year, so...
A move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion, second, to approve, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motions approved. Discussion possible action on construction contract award and budget reallocations for the 2018 street improvements project, Hanley Road from Carmichael Road to Heritage Boulevard. Tom? Anything you wanted to announce tonight, or...
I don't think so. About the project?
No, that's not quite what I was talking about.
About possible retirement?
Yeah.
I guess, I don't know. I am retiring. It's been a good four years, I guess. I think it's worked out well for both parties. Again, it's a part-time role at this point. Don't know what else you'd like me to say.
I just want to hear it publicly, because I...
It's a, it's kind of a secret. No, no, it's not a...
Good job. Well, again, you've done a great job here, and we're losing, over the last several months, year, well, eight, nine months, and for probably a few more months to come in the future, we're losing a lot of very good talent, quality talent. You've served our community very well, and on behalf of the city, I really, really appreciate and thank you for all you've done. You've been very helpful in discussions with me and helping me to understand a lot of what's going on, and I think you've done a great job for the city, and you're going to be sorely missed as well. Appreciate that, thank you. All right. Is that it? Got anything else?
Nothing else, just the one agenda item here, which is the 2018 street improvements, Hanley Road. It's a little bit different than our typical bid opening, and I guess the reason why you say that's not as straightforward, so I guess if, if I could, I'd like to just run through the issue sheet and kind of hit the, the items, and then maybe open it up for questions on the tail end. As you know, we held, we opened bids on March 1st. We received one bid from Monarch Paving. You can see in your issue sheet, we basically have three bid items in this particular project. There was a base bid, an alternate bid. If you recall, the first alternate bid was to add turn lanes to the business park, right turn lanes into Rock and O'Neill, O'Neill South. The second alternate we added, as far as a bid alternate, was the extension of the easterly limits of the project from Heritage Boulevard east to the roundabout at Trunk Highway 35. As you can see from the numbers, we listed the engineer's estimate there, $799,000 for the base bid, which compares to $746,145. Again, without reading all these numbers, but the base bid was, was basically, the low bid came under the engineer's estimate, the two alternates, the bids came in a little bit higher than the engineer's estimate. If you look at the net of all three, the low bid was still a little bit under the engineer's estimate, $927,006 versus $921,009. So, on this particular bid, the council has some award options, which would basically be four options to actual award a contract if you so choose to do so. You could award the base bid, you can award the base bid with just alternate one, you can go base bid with just alternate two, or you could go base bid with both alternates. As you know, we kind of started out this project in the early, early last fall, and it was basically a two-inch mill and overlay with some concrete curb repair, real similar to what we did last year on our 2017 project on Grandview Drive, or, excuse me, Grandview, Grandview Drive. We did have quite a bit of discussion on some of the safety concerns from the residents and some of the homeowners associations, going back to Public Safety Committee, Public Works Committee, it's been discussed at council. We actually had SEH directed by council to perform another additional traffic study that was presented to the council on December 7th. And then, so basically, the two-inch mill and overlay, when we got into various, addressing various safety concerns, coming up with some of the alternates, being adding right turn lanes, and even the base bid, which changed a four-lane, four-lane configuration that's out there currently to a three-lane, all these issues kind of contributed to scope changes. And the two consultants on this particular project have requested additional compensation. Now, I know in the, in the plan prep in our original letter of agreement for Bolton and Mank, there was a hourly not-to-exceed number. The consultant is requesting additional compensation based on these scope changes. And again, we've listed them there, conversion from three-lane to four-lane, the additional pavement marking and signage that was required by that three-lane design. There's quite a bit of review and correspondence with the DOT on how we were going to change a four-lane current existing roadway to three, as they connected up with their roundabout and their turn lane coming off Trunk Highway 35. And then, the second alternate to actually extend the project limits.
Why don't you make the DOT pick for that?
Well, we can get to that at the end, too, but I've kind of been trying to work for the last, probably starting about July sometime, but I've been trying to get the DOT to participate in that 900-foot roadway. And I can tell you, I'm not, have not been successful.
Gee, imagine that.
By agreement, they're saying everything west of that westerly roundabout is a city responsibility on all maintenance. And, and that's where that alternate two actually came from. The pavement condition is very poor, and we're actually going to spend a pretty good chunk of change on removing the existing pavement markings, and then when we're all said and done, putting back new paint. And it'd kind of be a shame to put down, or spend money to put new paint down on the road that's, it's in rough shape, it's very deteriorated. You could almost look at that 900-foot segment, I believe, and I think it's actually worse, in worse condition than the remainder of our project going out to the west, all the way down to Carmichael Road. But I was not successful in getting them to participate in any fashion there. We tried to go back to the original construction agreements, and nebulous and cloudy is two words I'll just leave for. But anyway, bottom line is, I couldn't get them to participate. And again, I actually, just to show you, as a, just as a sidelight, I have about twice as many hours into this project as I did in last year's project, from start to when we actually opened bids. And if you look at Grandview Drive, last year's project, and this year's project, the initial scope was pretty much the same. You have a little bit longer project on Hanley, but two-inch mill and overlay, concrete curb repairs, and I personally have double the hours, so that's my recommendation, is I believe it's very legitimate for the two consultants and the scope changes and their required additional hours. You have a little bit longer project on Hanley, but two-inch mill and overlay, concrete curb repairs, and I personally have double the hours, so that's my recommendation, is I believe, uh, it's very legitimate for the two consultants and, and the, the scope changes and their required additional hours. Getting into the funding, um, if you look at the numbers on your page one on the issue sheet, what I've done is I've estimated the, all the indirect costs and added that to the various construction costs. So in other words, engineering, construction staking, inspection, construction testing, advertising, legal, all the other costs that go into make up the total project cost has been added, uh, under that funding column there. So basically, um, if you, don't have to get your calculators out, but it's a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars difference between the bid and the total project cost. So each of those numbers are a hundred and eighty-eight thousand higher, and what the hundred and eighty-eight thousand represents is all the engineering, all the other indirect costs, and I do have a contingency in there as well. The contingency is about forty thousand dollars. The thought was, if we're going to have about a million-dollar project, and we're going to reallocate funds, again, if so approved by council, that a contingency probably would be the right thing to have in there on, on that magnitude of a project. So you can see, base bid, nine hundred and thirty-four thousand, one forty-five, all the way down to a total base bid, if that's awarded with the alternates one and two, the total project cost is going to be estimated at one million, one oh nine, nine eleven. So with that, if you look at where we started, again, going back to last fall, we had a eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollar budget for a two-inch mill and overlay. The additional scope changes and everything else, uh, as shown in the alternates get us up, um, to a one million, one oh nine project. So that's two hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred higher than that original eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollar budget. In talks with the finance director, one of the areas the council could reallocate funds if, if deciding to go with both alternates is the undesignated capital project funds. And I believe, you can check with Brenda, but I believe there's about a million four, I believe, in that fund currently. So with that, uh, again, and, uh, as far as a staff recommendation and, uh, what we would see from a staff perspective is, uh, on the additional design services, based on those scope changes, uh, we would recommend approval of Bolton and Mink's and SEH request for additional compensation. And if you look at the two, uh, alternates, the alternate one with the turn lanes, I, uh, we feel is a, uh, almost a must, so to speak, but if you're going to go from a four-lane to a three-lane design, it really makes sense, from a safety perspective, to add those two turn lanes, which is basically the alternate one. And on alternate two, the additional nine hundred feet that we were not, uh, successful getting some additional compensation from the DOT, it really makes sense because of the two reasons. One, again, the deterioration of that road is, it's in really, really tough shape, and, uh, it just kind of doesn't make sense, I believe, on a million-dollar project to pay, to remove paint and put down new paint on a road that's literally, it's popping out and potholes and, and everything else there. So staff recommendation is, would be to actually award the base bid with alternates one and two. And that would be nine hundred and twenty-one thousand, nine hundred, for, uh, nine hundred and twenty-one thousand, nine eleven and eighty-six cents would be the actual award for Monarch Paving that gets you to the one million, one oh nine, nine eleven total project cost. Realize that's a lot of numbers, and I didn't try to bury you with too much attachments on the, on the issue sheet, but as you can see, it's a little bit different, a little less straightforward, let's say, than our normal bid.
Tom, I don't know if you mentioned the amount that Bolton and Mink and SEH are looking for.
Yeah, it's, uh, on the bottom of their...
It's ninety-three hundred.
Ninety-three hundred additional dollars is for Bolton and Mink, and seventeen hundred dollars, uh, the top, uh, top paragraph there on sheet number two on the issue sheet, seventeen hundred dollars for SEH.
Okay, taking this in two parts, I'll move to approve the additional, uh, payment to Bolton and Mink in the amount of nine thousand, three hundred, and to SEH in the amount of one thousand, seven hundred.
I'll second.
Got a motion, second. Discussion?
Tom, got a question. Do you have a line of sight why this is, uh, the scope of the project really changed a little bit before Christmas? Do you have any kind of line of sight of why they're, um, now requesting additional funds?
Well, a couple of reasons, I guess. First of all, it's hourly not to exceed, so they usually expend the hours and they usually bill it, so you usually get December time in January, January time in February, and, uh, we pretty much, I guess we could have thought ahead and said, we think we're going to go over it, and probably gave you a heads up to that effect in January, but by the time they tabulated it... And actually, during the month of January, we were actually doing a lot of that, uh, the hours in that ninety-three hundred dollars was actually going on in January with a lot of the correspondence with the DOT and changing some of the, and adding the alternates. So all that pretty much happened during that same timeframe of January, so we didn't have it tallied up at that point, at, uh, at that point, so.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion's approved. Thanks, Tom. Oh, I'm sorry, we're always...
Another small item. The small item is the contract award.
I guess that's right, yeah.
I'll move to, uh, approve the contract for, uh, the base bid plus alternate one and two, so the amount would be nine hundred and twenty-one thousand, no, one million, one hundred and nine thousand. That's what the indirect cost.
The nine hundred and twenty-one...
Correct number is nine twenty-one, nine hundred and twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars and eighty-six cents.
Second.
Motion, second.
Do we also want to authorize the additional cost then to come from the undesigned public works, or, um, not public works, capital project line?
Yes.
With that addition to the motion.
And I agree.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion's approved.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Uh, discussion of possible action on membership to American City County Exchange LLC.
So how did this get on the agenda?
They just... Randy requested it.
It was, uh, sent to all of us.
Yeah, I, I saw it.
And I, uh, as I told, uh, well, as I said last meeting, be prepared to have this come again.
Sure.
So I'm tired of wasting our time on this stuff, so I'm trying to prove a point to you folks that voted for the last membership, that we have the people's business to do, and we need to move on with this inclusion and all this other stuff coming into the city. I think what you guys did was wrong, because you have devin, in the last four years, how many people voted in the whole city, average?
You mean for like a spring election?
All of them. Less than five percent?
That would have voted in all the elections?
In the last four years, maybe.
Oh, I would say you'd probably be at fifteen percent that voted in every election.
Fifteen percent that you guys voted for out of how many eligible voters that you guys decided to spend their money with for this thing? Doesn't make sense. You didn't represent anybody. You played a political game. And I think you guys did a disservice to you as this council. Ridiculous. And that's my opinion. So I want this to be the same thing. So we should be able to go, to counter anything that comes by, or we can continue to do memberships going on and further. Next week, we'll probably have two more, four more. When does it stop? We should have never done it in the first place. You guys got suckered into a political game. Is there anybody here to speak on behalf of, uh... I believe there is.
Well, we've, yeah, anybody that would like to comment on this?
Hi, I'm Diane Yolcom, and I'm from New Richmond. And one of the things I wanted to talk to you about is the value of joining this organization. There was, when I looked at the website and looked into this, uh, organization, um, first of all, what prompted that was because of what happened, uh, last week, our last meeting. And that is, I felt like, uh, the city council joining the NLC was completely, um, my opinion is political, and again, spending taxpayer money, especially when we look at the EMS and all the, the lack of funds we have for different things that are going on, healthcare, uh, mental health, whatever. But anyway, I was looking for an organization that would maybe help promote where my value system is, and my value system is looking for an organization whose mission was limited government, was free market principles, bringing together all the community, the polit, the politics, the city, the county, the private sector, the residents. There's so much going on in what's happening with us today, uh, not only nationwide, but even locally, that it seems like we've lost track, uh, of to, uh, why we're here. We're here to be unified as a governmental entity to help represent the citizens of this community and this county. Maybe I don't live here, but I do have a business here, and I pay an exorbitant amount of taxes. And I'm, I'm grateful to do that, because I like the community, and I like the fact that we have, uh, for the most part, representation. But what I saw last time was not representation. It was not, did not represent my values whatsoever, so that's why I'm promoting this organization. It said, it promotes policies of bringing people together, of lower taxes, taxpayer transparency, minimal debt, and minimal regulation. And the biggest thing is, and I, I talked to the county board, uh, a month ago, and I said, my, my taxes on my business in one year went up two thousand dollars. Where's that going to come from? We have retired people moving out of the community because of the taxes. And then arbitrarily, we join this organization that's going to cause more regulations, that's costing the, the city, not, not just fifteen hundred dollars, but if you look at it down the road, it's going to cost a lot more money. But I'm going to encourage you to see what you can do as leaders of this community to, uh, stop this, and if you're going to stay with the NLC, then I think, in all fairness, you should counteract that with the ACCE. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Tony?
Tony Bull, Hudson. I want to, again, last week was, uh, what it was supposed to be, was America, people who have the vote, people who were elected into office made a vote and made a decision, and they did it because they were thinking about people. Other people believe that maybe a common council should only be about business. It's a difference of opinion, but it doesn't make it wrong. I represent tonight the, uh, Hudson Inclusion Alliance. I am here to say to you that, uh, we believe the NLC, and we have a lot of conservative friends who are part of the NLC, do not see it as biased. This group is biased, but I'm going to say this very clearly. The Hudson Inclusion Alliance is made up of Republicans and Democrats. It's made up of people from traditional and non-traditional origins that live here as residents. We have people on our group that actually agree with the principles that are in the ACCE. Our group, the Hudson Inclusion Alliance, does not condone nor condemn the city for participating with that group. We are not afraid of education. We're not afraid of learning from other cities around the state, and if you, this body that we've elected, get some ideas from the ACCE, and you bring it to this table and you vote on it, that's the process we're supposed to be in. So that's the same for the NLCC, uh, the NLC. We, as citizens, are able to write letters to the editor. You've seen different sides. Currently, the citizens group has a class they're teaching, or members are, of that group are teaching a class on the Constitution that we believe is biased, and we are able to speak about it. We're not mad at the school for having it. They're allowing a course to happen. We get to call it out as a prejudicial course. They get to have the course. We continue. This is how it is going to work, and we're going to continue to share ideas. I don't think it's a bad thing. I encourage you to continue to think of people, not just business, and I'm very grateful for, for your work and the vote, and you are not wrong.
Tony.
Is it, oh, this is dialogue.
Do you, uh, do you support the city of Hudson joining the ACCE?
Thanks for asking, and I'll say it the way that, we actually had a meeting about this so I could get a vote, and I can say it this way. We neither condemn nor condone the joining of this group. We know we have members who agree with its position of looking for ways to save the taxpayer money. Our group, this is not our issue, this is not what we're fighting against, it is not comparable to the National League of Cities, and so if, if this is something you find valuable, and I'm a little sad that it wasn't a sincere agenda item. If it was an agenda item to teach you a lesson, then that feels to me like there's something wrong with how the group is working, because it, to me, felt like a legitimate offer. So, does that answer your question?
Why do you say it's not sincere?
Because he said it, I'm going to teach you a lesson, because Randy thought, I'm just going to show you, that, and he didn't say, I believe in it, I think it's a good idea. He said, I want you to see what can happen as an example, which I felt was disappointing.
Not from a, uh, comment of a council member, but do you know that whoever proposed this was sincere?
Yeah. What, whoever proposed it was Linda?
No, let, let me rephrase it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You're basing your comment that this was an insincere effort...
Yes.
On Mr. Morissette's comments.
I did say that.
I'm not sure that Mr. Morissette was the person that put this on the agenda, but assuming that somebody else did, are you questioning their sincerity?
I haven't heard their comments. I, I felt it was a sincere, uh, it does, it feels to me like a group that would be consistent with some of the values in Hudson, and it didn't surprise me. And so I know that it came in through a member from the citizens group, which is, just got, it doesn't make it right or wrong, it just, that's where it came from. Are they sincere? It's sad that if it's about counterbalancing the National League of City, and it's not even a group that's doing that. It's a, it's an idea, and it's, if you want to join it at this reasonable price, and you think that offers a value, in good heavens, it might settle that idea of having a balance, well then, good, do that.
Well, counterbalancing is what you were just talking about, isn't it?
If you see, see it as a counterbalance, feel free to do that.
This appears to me, and I haven't looked at it in detail, but it appears to me that it deals more with economic and financial, um, aspects of city government rather than values or...
Correct. The NLC also deals with tax, it finds money, it finds grants, it's, it also has a forum for saving on taxes, but it does much more, and it moves into a city that cares about the people and the culture, not just the businesses.
Thanks, Tony.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Any other questions?
I've got a question. You had talked about the Constitution class being taught at the school.
Correct.
And you, you contacted the district to express your displeasure?
Correct. Not at them, just, actually, we didn't contact the district to express our displeasure, only an inquiry to find out about it, what it was about. We have no, we have nothing against what the school district has done.
Okay.
I'm going to stick my neck out here as a staff member, as the leader of the staff, if you want to call it that. Again, it's your decision, this group, as many groups as you want to join, but you have to understand that, as a staff, we're not going to be able to provide support to these organizations. That's, I just want you to understand that, that if you join ten more organizations, that's all fine and good, but I just don't want the expectation out there in the community that staff members will be providing, for whatever research or whatever, you know, I just wanted to make that clear, because we don't have the staff to do that. So again, you make the deci, please let me finish, Tony, thank you. You make the decisions as to what groups we join, but I just wanted to put that out there, because I think, and I'm not saying it's Tony, I'm not saying anybody, but there's just been some feedback getting back to me that there's been some expectations that, you know, we will be providing assistance to groups, to assist them through these memberships, and I just wanted to put that out there.
It'd be similar to the Wisconsin League of Municipalities, but, I mean...
Well, the Wisconsin League of Municipalities, you know, they provide programs that are, you know, directly, but we also, they don't come to us and ask us to... Right.
That's all I mean.
To assist.
Right.
We, we go, actually go to them for support, but I just wanted to make that clear so that there wasn't a misconception of...
Well, and non-city staff persons can't get information directly from the League of Wisconsin.
Municipalities.
Municipalities. It's, you've got to be a staff or attorney or a member.
The National League of City can have other people other than the city administrators contact them and use them. As you, we had a discussion about this briefly. Other cities have even had the Chamber of Commerce help out and other outside groups. You don't have to do that. I'm saying if you feel the pinch of administration, there are solutions out there.
And if it's our membership, we're not going to be having the Chamber, again, this is my opinion, not going to be having the Chamber of Commerce or another outside... opinion, not gonna be having the Chamber of Commerce or another outside group representing the city.
Yep.
Once I get the membership in, all the council members, I assume, will have access to the, just as you do now with League of Wisconsin Municipalities, and what you do with that, you know, that's certainly up to you, but I'm just, from a staff perspective, we just don't have the staff to be-
Right. And there's a lot of solutions.
Yep. Thank you.
Any other conversation? Anything for Tony? Any questions for Tony?
Thank you, I appreciate your time and your service.
Roy?
I thought you were here for goats.
I'm dressed like it, right? First of all, is this already, is there a motion? Is that second?
There is no motion yet.
Isn't that your normal protocol to have a-
Well, but when we have something that people wanna talk about, we generally let them talk first.
Okay, thank you.
So, my name's Roy Shoberg.
Do you wanna move it?
He's not part of the line.
1108 Vine Street, the one with the signs. So, I looked behind the scenes on this organization. It's quite apparent, it's just kind of a sister organization of Alec. Alec is the lobbying group supported by the Koch Brothers in order to promote corporate interests. And this is the same thing, only a little bit more sinister style. So I offer, for the record, a research off the web, so I don't know if it's true or not, but it's from Source Watch. But I, I read it, and it had some things that are footnoted and documented, so to the extent it's been researched, I offer it, I'll offer it for, for your review. For example, I'll, I'll label it as a sinister organization because what they did at one time at a workshop, initial draft said privatization, and I think that's what the goal here is, to take away city services, take away local control of anything that can be switched over to private, that's what they're going to want to do. So on their workshop, they changed the name from privatization to effective tools for promoting limited government. And we heard those same words here tonight, limiting government. What that means is move towards privatization. So with the likes of the Koch Brothers funding this, it's only $50 to us, but the typical member pays $10,000 to $25,000, and happens to be a large corporation. That's who's behind this thing. So they're promoting such things as anti-climate change, even though the Arctic has been 40 degrees above normal this last year. They promote things, such things as preempting county and, uh, city rights. For example, our county started to discuss living wages, where we would stop exploiting the workers that work for our organizations, that, large organizations that deal with our county. We wanted to insist that they be paid at least a wage equal to the federal poverty level, thinking that if you pay less than that, it's exploitation. And as we were working on this legislation, Alec got into the state government, next thing you know, proposed legislation which is passed that denies the county, and of course, you too, the right to pass any type of a living wage ordinance. And that follows prior legislation that stopped us from controlling large animal feeding operations. It blocked our shoreline ordinances, mining operations, plastic bags that Buck Malick was promoting some time ago, and it brought the beauty of the voter suppression laws under voter ID. So this organization has an agenda, and I just would ask you to pause before you join this organization. I'm all in favor of free ideas, you guys can bring it in, that's fine, but I just want you to know who you're dealing with if you join this group. And also in this, you can sponsor me, because there's also a letter that some of the other opposition here, they were reading word for word through some of the points that they were supposed to read, so they did that very well. But there's also a sample letter that I can propose to you to send me to the next national conference, and I won't do that, because I don't think you'd pay for that. But I'll offer this to, uh, to you, Mayor, and the council for your review. If you decide not to act on it today, maybe you can give it further consideration and know who these, who this organization is. Thank you.
Thanks, Roy. Any questions for Roy?
So, last meeting, we were told that we were voting to sponsor a, or to join a George Soros-sponsored, uh, group, and now, now it's a Koch Brothers-sponsored group. Kind of interesting. Is that the balance you're talking about, Tony? No.
Well, to be clear, Randy, you did put this on the agenda. You asked, okay. And I believe your words were to teach us a lesson.
Did I say that today?
You actually did that.
Okay.
Okay, appreciate that.
All right, any further discussion on this? Is there a motion?
Well, I, I would, I just don't know enough. I mean, I had time to study the other one. We, this came, we got the email last Sunday, and it was on the agenda Friday. Admittedly, I looked at it this morning myself, and found similar to what Roy did, and so, before I would make a decision, I'd like more time, I guess, it'd be, or we could just say, "We're not gonna accept any more of these offers," and just leave it at that, you know.
I wanna look at it, too.
Okay, so-
Postpone.
Postpone.
Okay. Motion to postpone, uh, next meeting sufficient?
Next meeting.
Okay, so we'll put it on the calendar for the next meeting. Is that your motion, John?
Yeah.
All right, uh, motion second, was that right? All right, so we have a motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Discussion possible action on Resolution 6-18, adopting the updated City of Hudson fee schedule for 2018. So Mike is not here, uh, for this, and Jen is gonna discuss a little bit.
It's just, uh, various city departments updated the fees and charges to be imposed in 2018 last month, which you guys approved. But community development and building inspection fees have now been updated, and those fees and charges are in your packet. Mike is not here tonight to address his community development fees, although those are included. David is here to address his building inspection fees.
This is the first time you've had a chance to, to take a look at the building permit fee schedule changes, so I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
You know, I can say that I met with Mike and, uh, and David last Friday on this, and there certainly is a lot of thought and work that went into this, and it was probably overdue, and I think they did a great job, for what it's worth.
This, this has not been changed in the 17 years I've been here, so, the building permit fees, anyway. I don't know about the zoning. I don't think those have changed either.
Uh, the zoning's been changed incrementally. Uh, this is, this is more of a, uh, overall, uh, top-to-bottom change.
Do we have a motion?
Well, I have a, well, I have a question for you, David. What, what are the major changes?
Uh, I think going through, the, the initiator for, for the changes was the school district requesting us to review our, our building permit fees for the, for the school, the high school addition and alterations. And through the process, I found that, um, you know, we've, we've never tested our fee schedule for a $61 million project that the high school is. So, so I found by using the high school as an example, uh, the, and tracking our time and costs with that project, um, the, the, our, our existing fee schedule, uh, was a little, little, little inflated, uh, for, for, for a high cost, a high-value project like the high school.
So, item E, encourage you to do item D.
Item E is the permit, permit fee at the high school.
Yeah, that, so, so a large, larger value construction, uh, across the board, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna reduce that multiplier, so we're collecting less for, for, for any projects over $30 million.
Okay, and you're, you're confident that the, the city is not gonna be disadvantaged by lowering the fees?
Uh, I am confident.
Anybody else? Your motion?
We need a suspend.
Oh, that's right. Well, motion to suspend, yeah.
Second.
Motion second to suspend. Roll call.
I'm sorry, you can go ahead.
Yes.
I messed up, right?
Yes.
Morissette?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Hoggatt and Hall?
Yes.
Motion's approved, the rules are suspended.
Uh, move to adopt changes in fees, right?
Yeah, Resolution 18.
Resolution.
Project 18. 618.
I'll second.
We got a motion second to approve, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Uh, discussion possible action on Hudson School District building permit fee.
So like I said, uh, the, the school district formally requested us to review our, our permit fees, uh, for, for three particular building permits. One was the addition of the middle school, one was the, uh, the construction of the grandstand, and the third being the, the largest project, the addition and alterations to the high school. The, uh, when we, when we received that request, uh, the middle school project was, was already completed, so it made it very difficult for us to track, track our time and costs, um, on that project. Uh, so, so I went through the process of tracking our time and costs on the, on the two highs, the two high school projects. Uh, you'll, you'll see that, uh, in, in your, in your packet of information. Uh, I broke those two permits out, uh, by our existing schedule and by our proposed schedule. And you'll find that, uh, under the existing schedule, uh, the school district would have still owed, owed us $123,000, uh, $123,000 under our proposed schedule. They, they are going to be owing us $41,587.
In addition to what they've paid already.
In addition to what they've paid already.
So David, are these revised fee schedules based on some standard?
Yeah, uh, the, uh, the 99, uh, adoption of our, of our fee schedule was based on what the industry was doing at, at that time. The, the schedule, um, was, was a lot more arbitrary than it is now. You know, it wasn't really looking at project-by-project fees. The, uh, the, the current methodology in, in the industry is, is to look at our department budget, our expected cost, expected value of construction over the given year, and then using, using that information to come up with a multiplier for, for the fees. And, and that's, that's the basis of, of how I established this new, new fee schedule.
So it's not a, what you're proposing is not a special rate for the school district?
It is not a special rate for the school district.
Okay. And it's, the $41,587.62 would be the new outstanding balance pursuant to the revised schedule?
Correct, yeah.
Are you confident that will cover all of the city's costs that'll be incurred until the end of this project?
I am confident, yes. Yep, there's about nine months left in construction at the high school, but I, but I feel confident that this will cover, cover our costs.
I guess a concern would be as, if this would open the door to other people coming back and, and requesting fees, but rebates or, or reductions. But I would assume because of the size of the project, that's probably not going to be, that, that's my first reaction, it's not gonna be an issue. Is that correct?
I don't believe so. I mean, the, you know, this, this process, you, we identified the, the problem, that was the, the fact that our old schedule just didn't go high enough. Uh, so, so through this exercise, we, we've come up with a, with a, a figure that, that covers our costs, and it's not exorbitant.
These are the kinds of, the, the, uh, dog track project, I'm sorry, wrong name, don't have the correct name memorized yet, but, uh, that will be under the new fee schedule, so-
Correct, yeah.
We have no issues there.
Yeah.
Didn't you say, David, also, that this school district project was the highest that you've encountered at the city?
Correct. You know, prior, prior to the high school project, you know, the next closest projects were, was Uline at $27 million, and Presbyterian Homes at $28 million. So that this, this is by far, you know, the largest project to, to test our, our fee schedule.
I'll move that we apply the new fee schedule and have an outstanding balance due from this school district of $41,587.62.
Second. Now, a motion second. See somebody in the audience who'd like to comment? Rick?
Mayor, City Council, my name is Greg Sarno, I live at 1412 Laurel Avenue. Mr. Gray, thank you for your, for your calculations, uh, thank you for your efforts, but one of the city council folks, and I didn't see who it was, brought up a point I hadn't thought of, and sure as shooting when, if, I should say, um, the new fee schedule gets applied to the school district, you can bet Uline and some others will be in this room as fast as they can get here. So, my, not so many comments as, as questions. Mr. Gray said that we hadn't had anything quite as big as the school district before, excuse me. I've been in the district since 95, and we've put in middle schools, we put in grammar schools, we put in lead schools. Um, I don't know if any of those triggered the famous $30 million number or not. Just a question. Um, and getting back to the school district, when this contract was drawn up, when these permits were drawn up, I'm just curious as to, uh, what the school district and their advisors did at that time? When that contract, when those permits were let, so to speak, I believe the school district didn't have any questions at that point, and they had some pretty powerful advisors. Kraus Anderson is not a fly-by-night organization, and I, I would guess there were some other folks that advised them on the contracts as well. They signed the contracts, they agreed to the contracts. Where I come from, that's a binding contract. Second question is, um, if the school district is looking for the City of Hudson to give them a break on, whatever the math is, $90,000, I would submit to the school district that they ask Kraus Anderson to forgive and forget some money as well. I'm not sure why the City of Hudson in this particular case has to take the full burden. And my final concept, oh, excuse me, my final question, or maybe more of an observation, this, uh, wouldn't have anything to do with, um, any possible or any theoretical overruns in the project. It seems interesting that the timing of this and some rumors of overruns, um, happened at the same time. Anyway, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time. I would advise that the city council, at a minimum, ask the s- school district to pay the $41,000, and I think if we wanna keep the line short coming in for similar breaks, that we ask the school district to play, to pay the full $123,000. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Rick.
David, what agreement did the school district sign regarding these fees?
Well, uh, just to be clear, and Kathy, you could probably speak to this as well. I mean, our, our fees can't cover more than just our costs, you know, it's not, not a profit center. So, that, that's, you know, that's, that's why we're reducing the rate, the multiplier on these bigger projects, because we're just not-
Want me to jump in?
Yeah.
Couple of things. This project is still in process. That makes it unique as compared to other projects where the building permits have been paid and the projects have been completed. This project is still in progress. While it was in progress, the question came up regarding, via the school district, regarding the amount of the fees. That caused our department to look at the amount of the fees, because the school district raised the question. In general, permit fees are, the basis for permit fees are, they're designed to pay the cost of administration of that permit. It's not on a project-per-project basis, but that's what the intent is, not a revenue raiser. And so, when the issue came up, and while this project, construction project was still, still incomplete, not completed, that's what prompted Mr. Gray to review the fees and recognize that they needed- that's what prompted Mr. Gray to review the fees and recognize that they needed some adjustment. Hadn't been changed in quite a while, and there's a different methodology. And he did, what was that organization that you were, there's some model?
International, yeah, International Code Council. They, they write the codes.
That sets up models for establishing building permit fees. So we discussed, you know, is this going to open the door? And the reason it's, I see that as a low risk is that this is unique. It's the largest project that's been conducted in the city by far. The project is still incomplete, and so the issue of building permit fees and the legitimacy or the amount came into question. So, that's, you know...
I guess my question is, was there any document or anything signed where the school district said, yes, we agree to pay this amount for building?
They verbally contested our, our fee before signing, signing for the permit. And, and we allowed them to make a progress payment, basically, until we had the chance to, to do a thorough review.
Could you say they protested the fee or didn't? They agreed with it?
They protested the fee.
They, and I, I can weigh in here, too. They did protest the fee. And, and I can also say, and it's too bad Mike isn't here, I don't want to be talking for him, but in fact, I don't think this fee schedule, according to Mike, went far enough relative to taxing authorities. So, Mike, when he first came in, thought that we, one of the very first things he told me is that we really needed to revisit the fee schedule, because it was so outdated. And at about the same time, I found out that the school district was, in fact, protesting this. And Mike actually would be advocating for, correct me if I'm wrong here, David, advocating for, this is, he believes this is Peter paying Paul. And he thinks that taxing authorities are, are neighboring, or however you want to view it, taxing authorities, municipalities shouldn't have to pay any fees. Is that right, David?
Well, I don't know if he'd go that far. Probably a reduced fee.
He, where he came from, this, again, I, I don't want to speak for him, but he, he, where he had come from in the past, he said, practices generally, when you have taxing authorities like these that overlap, you are robbing Peter to pay Paul, and there's no point in, in charging them fees like this, so. Anyway, that's kind of where all this came from.
Well, the letter here asks to be alleviated from their, any remaining debt owed. Dr. Ulett said that, can we get out of the, what we owe, the $123. So you've reduced it to $41,000 based on?
Plus what they've paid.
Right. Plus they've already paid $200 and some thousand.
$278.
$278.
$18, I'm sorry.
Some of the...
We would have the option, do we have the option to eliminate whatever the balance is in, in total, or?
Well, my opinion is, if, if David has come up with a fee schedule that he believes is, you know, covers the city's costs and is fairly distributed through the various types of building projects, that we don't have a basis to just waive the fee. We now have a fee schedule that he believes is fair and consistent and can be appropriately applied to the remainder of this project.
Well, I think what you're asking for, John, is probably a policy that we could revisit at some point in time.
Yes.
And especially when Mike is here.
Yep. Okay.
I, I didn't find any other community that, that does, does the same type of reduced, reduced fee or waived fee.
So, this issue is coming up before the, the project is finalized?
Correct, yeah.
So, would it make more sense to wait until the project is finalized before addressing this issue?
You know, I think the, the biggest thing that was kind of... I guess there's a lot of things that, that go into play trying to get this, you know, put to rest is, you know, Brenda mentioned, we're getting, we're getting audited. You know, so our, you know, this is a 2017 permit that, that's, that's open. We want to know, you know, what, what we're going to be expecting to collect on it. Like Kathy mentioned, you know, I, I can't spend this much time on, on every particular project trying to account for our, our costs. You know, this is a special instance that I've, that I've been working on, on our off-season, so to speak. I don't have the time to commit to this, you know, throughout the rest of the year.
So, getting back to, to Greg's question, is there going to be a line forming at your door?
I don't think so. I really don't think so. This is a project that's still ongoing. It, it, it's a unique project in, in the scope and size. And that's, that's the reason for this exercise.
So Uline, for instance, their assessment was based on a standard that you think applied to, to a project of that size?
Correct, yeah.
So they haven't got a beef?
Have they had a beef?
No, do they have a, they don't have a beef just because we do this. They can't say they're disadvantaged.
No, that, that project's long been closed out.
Okay.
Like I said, Tom, this, this is something that Mike wanted to put in place, anyway. So arguably, you take the, the school district out of the equation. Does that mean that all these people that have, this applied to our, our old fee schedule applied to in the past, are they going to come back?
Well, it's prospective.
Well, yes.
Right.
And the city has a right and obligation to update its fee schedule. I mean, that's basically what's happening.
Well, and it is another taxing authority, so we are...
Overlapping taxing.
Yeah, we're trying to, you know, be accommodating, I think. But, but to David's point, this is what's fair, so.
It just so happens this project was going on when Mike thought this fee schedule needed to be redone, anyway, revisited, so.
All right.
And I, and just one last thing. I think Mike's coming around to my point of view and, and feels that, you know, a fair multiplier across the board is, is, is the best way to go.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Because he's not here, so that's good.
It's easy to talk for him when he's not here.
Yeah. Thank you for that, David. Anybody else? Any other comments? We all good? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion's approved. Discussion possible action on Ordinance 6-18, amending Chapter 65 of the Hudson City Code to appoint alternate members to the St. Cris EMS commission.
This is a non-controversial EMS issue. And it's just, as, as the, as the language indicates, that the authority, that the mayor or whoever the executive is and our partners, can appoint an alternate to attend meetings and have voting power, because it sometimes comes up that the person can't make it. So, we decided to have this change made to the ordinance, and the commission voted at its last meeting to request that the city approve it. So that's why this is on the agenda this evening.
Is this for all members, then?
I'm sorry.
Does that include the Hudson council representative as well, or just the?
Yeah, every, every representative.
Every rep, okay.
Yep.
I'll make the motion to suspend the rules.
Second. Got a motion, second to suspend. Roll call?
Morissette?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Hoggatt?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Motion's approved, the rules are suspended.
I'll move to adopt Ordinance 6-18.
Second.
Got a motion, second to approve. Discussion?
I think this makes sense, because then we won't have a problem with the lack of a quorum if there's an alternate available.
Well, it was that whether the person that was filling in could vote is part of it, too, so.
Yes, and they can make some decisions.
Anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion's approved. Discussion possible action on request for Hudson Boosters to extend the lease agreement at 6 St. Cris Street.
Tom's not here. We discussed it at Public Works, I believe, and just making it even with the rowing club going from 50 to 100 a month. Tom likes to raise the rent on people, so it's good to go. But say it. I said you like to raise the rent on people, so. We were just making it equal to the other one.
No, I just want to do what's fair for the city.
That's right, yep.
So I'll move that we approve the lease with the rent increase from $50 to $100 a month.
Second.
Got a motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion's approved. Discussion possible action on Ordinance 8-18, amending City Code Section 99-22 to exempt the City of Hudson from permit requirements under this section for temporary keeping of goats on city park and other city-owned properties for control of invasive species and other weed control purposes.
Move to suspend the rules?
Second.
Got a motion and second to suspend. Roll call?
Morissette?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Hoggatt?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Motion's approved, the rules are suspended.
I'll move to adopt Ordinance Number 8-18.
Second.
Got a motion and second for approval.
There is a seven that's out there, just in case you're wondering why we skipped from six to eight, so. Just haven't seen it yet.
Is there a, any discussion?
I just anecdotally have seen this done near my daughter's house in Atlanta, and they have city areas where they, not only do they, the goats eat what's in there, but they take Christmas trees down there, and the goats eat Christmas trees. It's absolutely amazing. So the goats will eat whatever. And so, they're really a great resource when it comes to not using chemicals to manage evasives and other things.
Okay. Greg?
Good evening again. The terminology in H is...
Again, identify yourself and address.
Greg Sarno. I live at 1412 Laurel Avenue. Sorry. In H, the terminology is quite confusing, so I'm simply going to ask the question, by voting yes to this, does that mean we're going to have goats in the city park?
For a limited amount of time, is that, is approved in the...
Just, that's, that's my only question. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Anybody?
Yeah.
You're more than welcome to, absolutely. We're going to, we, I think it was going to be unanimous, Roy, but you know, it's a change.
My wife wanted me to make sure that it won't impair our ability to have Bob the goat, because Bob is the best goat that there is. So, put an exception into this rule, just for me, actually for Lana.
Writing that down to have...
Bob's the goat that will get up high and knock the big, tall ones down for the little ones. So, most prized goat that there is. So.
Now we know.
We want Bob, we want Bob in May.
All right, anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion's approved. Only thing I have to say is congratulations to our state champion Hudson High School hockey team. I think that's pretty awesome, yeah? Three P champions, that's pretty cool, and we hope to have them in for the next meeting. They were on spring break. Well deserved. Anybody?
John, wasn't there, at our last Public Works, there was the urban forestry?
Yeah, we've won an award, and we'll be presenting that on the 26th, the second council meeting of this month. But, yeah, we did win a statewide award for our work and tree tracks around the city, so. It's pretty cool. Tom Zulie and Buck Malick received the award for us.
Excellent, thank you. Anybody else? Anything for future agendas?
You're going to have the, the American City-City Exchange on the next meeting?
Okay, anything else, anybody?
The absentee ballots are available for the spring election here, for in-person voting. So during regular business hours, we did want to note, and it is on the website, that on Friday before the election is Good Friday, so City Hall is closed, but we will be open from 3:00 to 5:00 that day, as required by state law. So we will have staff here, at least from 3:00 to 5:00 that day. But every other day, starting today through the, is it 30, 31st?
Friday before the...
Friday before the, Thursday before the election, we'll be open 8:00 to 4:30, Doug, if anybody wants to vote in person.
Bring your photo ID.
Yep, photo ID.
Anybody else?
Move to adjourn.
Got a motion to adjourn, motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both, motion's approved, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.